Because of the COVID-19 social distancing recommendations, our meeting tonight is being held virtually via Zoom. I am at City Hall and Martha Summerall is in her office and the city administrator is working from her own workspace and council and other staff are joining remotely. The public is invited to participate by using the instructions included on the city council calendar item listed on the front of missionks.org. Public participants will be allowed to make public comments through the comment feature. Please note that comments are visible by all participants. If you wish to make a public comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please be conscientious of the fact that others are trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Would you rise and please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Martha, will you please call roll?
Yes, Boltinghouse?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Laura?
Here.
Inman?
Here.
Krang?
Here.
Rothrock?
Here.
Flaschmacher?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we have a revised agenda this evening with one item added under new business. I would entertain a motion to approve our revised agenda as presented.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt the revised agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Can I ask who seconded that, please?
Ken.
Yeah, I did.
All right, please call for the vote.
Davis?
Hi.
Flaschmacher?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Krang?
Hi.
Rothrock?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item one of our agenda, public hearings. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so moving on to item two, special presentations. Although we are meeting virtually tonight, we do have two proclamations that I would like to share. Our first proclamation recognizes the Faith Always Win Foundation that is working to make a difference against hateful acts through kindness and interfaith dialogue. This year's event, Seven Days Make a Ripple Change the World, will be April 21st through 27th. And during these seven days, the Faith Always Wins Foundation is planning events that promote the importance of community, of kindness, respect, and understanding, values that our community embraces not only during these seven days, but at all times. Their activities, like those of others, have been impacted by the COVID-19 situation and they have transitioned to virtual events for 2020. This proclamation will be shared via social media. Do we need a motion on that?
We don't. Mayor, I would just add that along with the proclamation, there will be links to the virtual events and activities so that our residents can certainly participate. The biggest sort of loss to the event this year was that we had been encouraged to host a blood, a community blood drive in connection with this, and obviously we're unable to do that, but that is an activity that we have routinely and regularly hosted at our community center, and so we will continue to do that when it is safe to do so. We will be continuing to promote their events and activities through this process later this month.
All right, our second proclamation is a Fair Housing Month proclamation. This recognizes Fair Housing Month in Mission. This April marks 52 years since the signing of the Federal Fair Housing Act. It is important that we recognize and raise awareness of each individual's rights under fair housing. We are committed to equal housing opportunities in our community, and I am honored to proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Mission. All right, moving on to item three, issuance of notes and bonds. We do not have the issuance of any notes and bonds on our agenda, so we'll move on to item four, consent agenda. Our consent agenda has three items on it this evening. Our council committees met on April 8th and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. Several other items considered by the committees will be presented under committee reports later on in our agenda tonight. If a council member or member of the public would like any item removed from the consent agenda, now would be the time to make that request. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda is printed items 4A through 4C.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Martha, please call for the vote.
Laura?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Inman? Inman? Krang?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Flaschmacher?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Rothrock?
Hi.
Thank you, motion carries.
All right. Moving on to item five, public comments. If any members of the public participating via Zoom would like to make a public comment on items not included in our agenda, now would be the time to do that. So please submit your comments or questions under the chat feature, and remember that your questions are visible to all participating in the Zoom meeting. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, move on to item six, action items. We do not have any items from our planning commission this evening, so we'll move on to item seven, committee reports. First off, council member Laura, will you provide a report on our finance and administration committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on April 8th and considered two items, including acceptance of the meeting minutes. A resolution approving surplus property for sale or disposal was approved on the consent agenda tonight. There are no additional items from the committee for consideration tonight. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on next to council member Thomas, will you provide a report on our Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on April 8th and considered five items. These included acceptance of the committee minutes and an update to the city's tree plan, which was approved on tonight's consent agenda. There are three additional items related to Lamar Rehabilitation and Resurfacing Project for consideration tonight. Item 7A, Lamar Rehabilitation and Resurfacing U-Bass Contract Award. This project includes rehabilitation and resurfacing of Lamar between Foxridge Drive and Shawnee Mission Parkway, including the use of U-Bass surface treatment. The project also includes bike lanes that will be funded through a Safe Routes to School grant. The bike lanes will be bid separately through KDOT. The scope and scale of this project has evolved into the, in the last few years, and both CARs funds and the Safe Routes to School grant are now available to fund a portion of the project. In March 2019, council authorized a task order with Olson for design to move the project forward toward construction. During the design process, a walkthrough of the entire street was undertaken, and it was determined that there were many areas requiring basin joint repair, which were not included in the preliminary budget estimate. Because of this, the engineer's estimate is over what was originally approved in the CIP budget. The project was bid in February and two bids were received. Following receipt of the bids, crack sealing costs were removed from the engineer's estimate in both bids as it not recommended prior to a U-Bass treatment. The lowest and most responsive bid received was from Superior Bow and Asphalt Company in the amount of $928,994.15. This bid exceeds the engineer's estimate by 2.8%, but based on bid negotiations, modifications to construction inspection services, and additional CARs funding through a change order, staff is recommending approval of this contract as there are sufficient funds in the street program CIP to proceed. Mayor, I move the city council approve a contract with Superior Bow and Asphalt Company, LLC for the Lamar Avenue, Foxridge Drive, to Shawnee Mission Parkway Rehabilitation and Resurfacing Project in an amount not to exceed $928,994.15.
Second. We have a motion in a second, discussion. Yes.
Yes, I know for those who weren't tuning into our committee meetings that this might seem like a very large project to proceed with in times of financial uncertainty, but I think it's a good idea to go ahead and proceed because it's a much-needed, highly visible project on a much-traveled road, and also we currently have the CARs funding and the Safe Routes to School funding that we might not have if we were to delay, and that's a big financial benefit to the city.
Right, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Soya.
Yes.
How long, I believe you said that the project's going to start in May, and how long do we think it's going to take?
Sorry, I had to show my, figure out the video. They're estimating 90 days of construction.
90 days, okay, thank you.
Depending on weather.
Sure.
All right, anybody else? Seeing none?
Wait, Soya, just, just as a point of clarification, that's 90 days on the U-Bass portion, and then the bike lane portion of the project, we have not yet bid, but that will add some additional construction, have some construction implications for the project, correct?
Correct, and KDOT is trying to get that bid going, but there could, depending on how long this takes them, because you know, they're staying at home and staggering their schedules as well, there could be a little bit of a delay between the U-Bass and the bike lanes. We're going to put down temporary markings and we're trying to coordinate it, so it's pretty seamless, but it'll be, you know, contingency on KDOT.
All right, any other discussion items? Right, seeing none, Martha, please call for the vote.
Inman?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Krang?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Rothrock?
Hi.
Flaschmacher?
Hi.
Thank you, motion carries.
Next up, we have item 7B, Lamar Construction Inspection Service Contract. The Lamar project includes U-Bass treatment, spot, curb, gutter, pavement, joint, and sidewalk repair and replacement, and bike lanes. The bike lanes are a separate project that will be administered by KDOT using Safe Routes to Schools funds and will be added following completion of the surface treatment. Since KDOT is administering the bike lane portion of the project, the city is required to select a construction inspector from their list of qualified firms. Peppercorn Engineering and Environmental LLC has submitted a statement of qualifications to KDOT for inspection services and will be performing these services for the bike lane portion of the project. The city requested they submit a proposal for inspection of the rehabilitation and resurfacing portion of the project as well. The proposal includes part-time inspection of the project for a period of 90 working days. Based on Peppercorn's experience and qualifications for performing inspection of KDOT projects and to ensure continuity throughout the project, staff is recommending approval of the Construction Inspection Services Agreement in an amount not to exceed $39,042. The contract is based on a 90-day construction timeline, and the city will only be billed for actual time spent on the project. Mayor, I move the city approve a Construction Inspection Service Agreement with Peppercorn Engineering and Environmental LLC, Peppercorn, for construction inspection services for the Lamar Rehabilitation and Resurfacing U-Bass Project in an amount not to exceed $39,042.
Second. We have a motion in a second, discussion. Seeing none, Martha, please call for the vote.
Laura?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Krang?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Rothrock?
Hi.
Flaschmacher?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Thank you, motion carries.
Last item, 7C, is the Lamar Interlocal Agreement for CARs Funding. The Lamar project is eligible for Johnson County CARs Funding for a portion of the construction and construction inspection cost. The conceptual project cost submitted to CARs in 2019 totaled $938,060. Following the project bid opening in March, the total project cost is now estimated at $1,141,143, due to the factors previously described. This Interlocal Agreement obligates CARs Funding for the project in an amount not to exceed $422,000. The project is also eligible for additional CARs Funding through a change order in an amount not to exceed $75,000, and this additional funding has been requested by the city. Mayor, I move the city council approve the Interlocal Agreement with Johnson County for the public improvement of Lamar Avenue, Foxridge Drive, to Shawnee Mission Parkway CARs Project Number 320001323 using 2020 CARs Program funding in an amount not to exceed $422,000.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Martha, please call for the vote.
Davis?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Rothrock?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Krang?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Flaschmacher?
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you.
Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. That concludes item number seven, moving on to item number eight, unfinished business. We do not have any unfinished business tonight, so we'll move on to item nine, new business. We have three new business items tonight. Our first is a resolution recognizing Earth Day 2020. Ms. Smith, will you please provide us with information on this item? Unmute, please.
Been a long day, I think I'm on my seventh Zoom meeting today. Anyway, thank you. Yeah, so what, what we have proposed for the council's consideration is a resolution that would honor the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. So in 1970, First Earth Day was organized to honor the earth and kind of give a voice to emerging public awareness surrounding environmental issues and concerns. And so 50 years later, Earth Day remains an important opportunity for us to really renew and our resolve and our commitment to preserving and protecting the environment. And as we look at the conversations that we're having in today's environment around climate change and the impacts that it has on our economy, our society, our health, and our quality of life, we feel like it's important to acknowledge Earth Day as an important celebration and a time to really encourage our residents to step up and use their collective voice to meet the challenges that we face today. So this resolution would, would honor that 50th anniversary of Earth Day and encourage Mission residents to get out and engage in activities, which would support those kinds of goals and values and objectives. This year, again, we are challenged by COVID-19 to promote and gather together for those types of activities, and so this year we would be promoting a virtual Earth Day. And if the council passes the resolution, we have a number of virtual activities and suggestions that will be posted to our website that our residents can explore as they celebrate Earth Day this year.
All right. Our next item is...
So we need a motion on, yeah, we would need the council to adopt that resolution.
Mayor, I move that the city council approve a resolution in honor of the 50th anniversary of Earth Day and encouraging Mission residents to participate in virtual Earth Day celebrations.
Second. We have a motion in a second, discussion. Miss Solis?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to thank Emily Rangel and also our Sustainability Commission for working really hard on putting together a list of resources for the virtual Earth Day events, and I hope that everyone will check those out on the website.
All right, anybody else? All right, Martha, please call for the vote.
Thomas?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Flaschmacher?
Hi.
Rothrock?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Krang?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, then we move on. The next item is to change the time of our upcoming city council work sessions on May 27th and June 24th, and any other night that might be added through August to 6:30 PM. Ms. Smith?
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. Each year, we really look to kind of adopt a blanket time for our budget work sessions. They are set currently the fourth Wednesdays of each month to, as regular or alternative legislative meeting dates, so the meeting time is set by ordinance at 7:00 PM. So in order for us to consider moving those meetings up to begin earlier, the council needs to take specific action to do that. So each year for the last several, we have recommended that we begin those meetings at 6:30 rather than 7:00 PM, and that would be our recommendation for 2020, looking at the 2021 budget.
I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council approve the start time of 6:30 PM for all upcoming work sessions through August 31st, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, discussion. Hearing none, Martha, please call for the vote.
Davis?
Hi.
Flaschmacher?
Hi.
Rothrock?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Krang?
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right. Our next item was added to the agenda this afternoon, following Governor Kelly's announcement this afternoon to extend the statewide stay-at-home orders through Sunday, May 3rd. Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as the mayor referenced, this was a late afternoon addition, following the governor's daily press conference. And so I am perhaps not as entirely prepared, but because we were meeting tonight and didn't require the call of a special meeting, I reached out to the mayor this afternoon and asked if we might revise the agenda and add this so we could at least start a conversation about what that means in terms of some of the other decisions that, that you as a council have made relative to the stay-at-home orders that have come down both at the state and the county level. So the, this afternoon, those statewide orders that were put in place by Governor Kelly previously and set to expire on April 19th have now been extended through Sunday, May 3rd. We, we expect that, I don't know if Governor Parsons made the announcement, we expect that the state of Missouri will follow, and in fact, I believe we may see some additional extensions coming out of the local metropolitan area and the Core Four group that would extend that date slightly beyond Governor Kelly's date. I think the date that we're hearing a lot of conversation around would be potentially May 15th, although that has not yet been specifically decided. We, so as you know, we last amended our emergency declaration and emergency proclamation and aligned it with the stay-at-home orders that were currently in place, so that would have been the statewide order through April 19th, at which time it was set to expire the existing county, county order, which was through April 24th, would sort of have come into play. And so we aligned the closure of our facilities and some of our other decisions with that April 24th date. So I thought with the announcement today, knowing that we are going to at least May 3rd and the potential, I think, for May 15th, again, wanted to share with you, get some feedback, thoughts, maybe some of these initial preliminary thoughts and recommendations on my part, haven't had a lot of time to digest all of this, but we obviously as a staff have been, and a leadership team, been thinking about it, knowing that this potential is sort of looming on the horizon. And if you're comfortable looking at making an amendment to that emergency proclamation, you could certainly do that tonight. If not, we could discuss, we can collect whatever additional information you might want to have or consider, and then we could call a special meeting. But I didn't want to put off a call for a special meeting until next week and then rush us up against our April 24th sort of deadline. So in looking at, and I think, Emily, I can share the screen, correct? No, I can't. Do you? I don't have the share screen feature all of a sudden today from the way I've logged in, so.
Okay.
Martha, could you email Emily the proclamation that you just emailed me and let her share that screen? So we'll pull up, Emily will pull up in just a minute, the proclamation and the changes that we made on April 24th. I guess what, one thought was, you know, we, as we talked about on April 1st, we don't necessarily need to revise the dates in our emergency proclamation because the statewide order and the countywide order will take precedence over ours. However, we've talked about, you know, making the amendments and continuing to keep that updated because it's a great communication tool for our residents, our businesses, and and our employees. So again, that would be the reason that I would suggest that we look at potentially considering an amendment to that again. So in April, we essentially just aligned the closure of our city facilities to the public, which is something that we started back, I believe on March 16th, actually March 13th, at about 5 o'clock that afternoon, we closed our facilities to the public, and they have been closed ever since. I think that certainly would be, as we continue to look at the stay-at-home orders, we have adjusted our processes and procedures and continue to be able to serve the public generally in all areas without it being open for walk-in traffic. So question number one, or thought number one would be, should we continue to close our city facilities to the public through any period? And maybe we don't make, if we make some amendments, maybe we don't make that date specific. Maybe we look at just leaving ourselves the flexibility, if our goal is to align with and match up with state or countywide orders, that we not keep trying to put date on this so that we don't have to amend. And Emily, you can go ahead and share that if, if you want, please, thank you. So that would, that would be one consideration. I think the one service delivery area that would be impacted and is impacted most significantly by the extension of these orders, and I think, Emily, if you'll scroll just down to the bottom, you'll see the changes that we made at the last meeting. So there, that's probably good. So I think the biggest impact would be court. We had previously sort of postponed our court through May 12th. So certainly, just based on any citations that are being issued at this time, we were starting to line those up with a May 12th court date, so there would potentially be some adjustments that would be needed to be made to court dockets to extend those out a little bit further, although not much further even if we went through the May 15th date. But that is probably the most significant in terms of people that would be coming to the city hall facility in particular and trying to do business. Obviously with the community center, that's, I think, certainly not a facility that, even as an essential governmental function, a health and fitness center is not a facility that would be allowed to be open. So that sort of takes that off the table in consideration there, but that's obviously one of our facilities that's most impacted. So in terms of a decision, I think, do we keep city hall, excuse me, city hall, the public works facility closed to the public? Do we continue to meet virtually, both as council, as staff, as boards and commissions? I think those, in my mind, are sort of relatively the, the easy questions, or at least would seem to be the easier questions based on where we've been and the direction that has been provided by the council to date. And then the, probably the big question is then, what, what would we do around compensation for employees? So why don't we take a break there? Let's get any feedback on facility Let's get any feedback on facility closures, questions there, and then I will come back and share some additional thoughts and details for that employee compensation and schedule.
Sally.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I think I personally would be comfortable continuing the closures, you know, through the longer of that statewide or that 5/15 Core Four date. I listened to part of the Governor's call today, and I know one thing they said is that the continuation of social distancing should happen for at least two weeks. We shouldn't go, start resuming normal activities until two weeks after the peak. And that's not expected to happen until, I think, late April, which would align with probably that May 15th date that the Core Four is discussing. So I think staying closed until that May 15th date, it makes sense, you know, knowing that we could always revise it and move things earlier if we needed to.
Right, anybody else?
I would certainly agree. I think just start following the state and county guidelines and not try to guess on dates, just align ourselves and knowing that as long as those are in effect, we are to follow them. So that makes a lot of sense.
Mr. Mayor, I think to that, to one point, I think so far, there are operations that have been allowed under those orders that we could resume sooner. But I think aligning our closures with the date of their stay-at-home, just for clarity, that that makes sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would agree with what has been said. I think it's a prudent thing for us to follow, especially since this area has a high number of cases and that we should really be in line with the Core Four and our county especially.
Yes, Ms. Thomas.
Flora, do you feel comfortable in moving, you know, May 15th forward without having that date locked down from the Core Four?
Well, what I think I would recommend is that we not put any date in this and that we just simply say that we will continue to observe facility closures through any existing statewide or countywide stay-at-home orders. I do feel, I feel that that May 15th date is imminent. But I think rather than put that specific date in there, if we would just be open to saying that we are going to align ourselves with any of those state or countywide orders, then again, we wouldn't need to come back and revisit that. And it would be easily communicated to our residents because those are going to be very public dates and recommendations that will be coming out.
I think that sounds like a good plan.
I do too.
I agree.
All right, do we need a motion to that effect or?
Well, let me, so let's suggest, let's move on to kind of the employee compensation piece, and then we'll come back and see if we can't come up with some language that would make sense. So I know one of the things that we have been very appreciative of, and I know the employees have been very appreciative of the action that we took back on April 1st, and that was to make sure that we were compensating both full and part-time employees regardless of whether they were working on a regular schedule, a staggered schedule, working remotely, or in the case of part-time employees, often not working at all or physically reporting to the facility, that we would continue to compensate those folks based on their regular schedules each week to keep them whole, so that they had that sense of financial security. And the council in the April 1st amendment to the emergency declaration included that and extended that through the April 24th date, which was the expiration of the previous or current county stay-at-home orders. So I feel like that's what we've committed to if we were to look at. And if we think that this is going to be extended through the 15th of May, that means that we have three more weeks to be considered and looked at from an employee compensation standpoint. So I wanted to share a little bit, I know that certainly this is a big issue, both for you as financial stewards and keepers of the city's resources, as well as for our employees. So just today, we submitted our first payroll that reflects sort of those COVID-19 hours. And so I can give you some better details around what that actually looks like in terms of the dollar impact and the number of hours working as we consider anything that we would move forward. So I will tell you that of $197,460 payroll, two-week payroll period, so that is wages and taxes, $37,000 of that was coded and could be attributed to COVID-19 hours. So that means hours that an employee was not physically doing work of some type, yet they were compensated. So that's about 16%, I believe, of that total payroll. The lion's share of that is for our part-time employees at the community center. And so about $16,000 of that $37,000 was specifically related to our part-time employees. If we break it down on a weekly basis, it's costing us about $8,500 a week to keep our part-timers employed and not having to worry about filing for unemployment or looking for other options.
Question for you.
Yes.
Now, my understanding, if you're paying people with COVID-19-related hours or payments, whatever you want to call them, that you are, or we as a city are not, having to pay the employer portion of, for instance, social security?
I think there's still some lack of clarity around that. I think there's some legislation that has been, is working its way. We've been submitting and supporting some legislation that would allow us to make sure. But we will certainly, we have the ability to take advantage of those tax credits, we absolutely will.
Okay, great, all right, thank you.
So right now, if I look at total exposure, let's just say the council were to direct us to kind of continue that practice. And let me back up a little bit. So obviously, the biggest piece of that is part-time employees at the community center. The second department that's impacted most would be Public Works. And that's because we have our staff, as I mentioned, I think, before, on staggered crews. I think this is kind of worst-case scenario. And I think with each day that passes and each week that passes, we're getting better about things that we can assign employees while they're working remotely to ensure that they are able to sort of contribute and advance our programs and services and be prepared for when things get to open up a little bit more fully. Public Works, that has obviously been a little bit more of a challenge. We've kept the staggered crews to maintain the social distancing for those employees. But I think in talking with Celia even this afternoon, I think there are some opportunities for us to get even a little bit more creative and still recognize and maintain appropriate social distancing for those employees, but to create more opportunities for people to get closer to that full 40-hour-a-week work schedule. And so if we were to look at, so essentially, what we've done in terms of a dollar, estimated dollar amount, what you've committed to through your previous votes and support of the disaster proclamation is about $75,800. If we were to continue with the current practice for an additional three weeks, we would be looking at about another $56,900. So we're looking at about a total of $132,800 for you or for us to basically keep our employee population whole through what we think is the life of the stay-at-home order. That is only about 60, it's not an insignificant amount of money, but it's about 67% of one regular payroll for us over the course of the year. And it's about 1.7% of our total overall personnel costs. The other thing that I have not had and I will be working through tomorrow is looking at where I think we will be overall from a personnel cost standpoint in 2020. So we've talked a little bit about, you know, it will be difficult for us to look at revenue projections and impacts to revenues until we get a little further into the summer, just because of the lag in sales tax collections. But through the first quarter of the year, we were in good shape. The departments and I are continuing to work on budget reduction scenarios and opportunities. But we also know that we have, through position vacancies, through savings and benefits, you'll recall that we didn't have, we budgeted for about a 10, at least a 10, closer to 12% increase in health insurance costs for 2020, and we were able to hold that increase to zero. So we know we have savings that are built into that budget. We have two vacancies currently in the Police Department, a vacancy in Public Works, a vacancy in Parks and Recreation, maintenance and their maintenance staff. And then, for example, the Planner's position was budgeted for a full year, and we essentially did not hire Caitlin until the 1st of April. So there's a quarter's worth of savings in Planner's salary there. So all that being said, I haven't run all the numbers and I will crunch all of those numbers. But I think that there's certainly, as we have every year, there's also some flexibility in that Personnel Services line item portion of the budget. So I'll stop there, take any questions, try to answer anything more specifically. And I'm sorry, I've been frantically crunching numbers since about 3 o'clock this afternoon, so.
Flora, it's Debbie. I just want to thank you for putting that together because I was curious as to how many vacancies we currently have. We don't have any offers on the table right now, do we?
No, we do have, we do have, in the Police Department, because those positions take a long time to fill, we do have some people sort of in that process, but we don't have any other offers on the table currently.
Thank you, you did a great job. Those were questions that I had, and I think you just answered them great, I appreciate it, thank you.
Sally.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, I would be in support of continuing to make our employees whole, at least through that May 15th date. I think we might not want to make it indefinite, like the other portion of the order that we've been discussing, or make it necessarily match the extensions, regardless of how long they go. But I think with the budget information that Laura has presented, we're in a place where we can afford and should continue to support our employees through that May 15th date. I agree.
What plans do we have with the pool and seasonal workers that we would typically be looking, probably start to hire on at this point in the year or in the near future?
So we have been working to try to position ourselves to at least interview and make conditional offers for those seasonal positions so that as we get closer to being able to know whether we are going to be able to open those facilities or offer those programs, we're ready to get those people through the last pieces of their hiring processes. I will tell you that we are having some difficulty in general recruiting and finding staff. And we're not sure what that is attributed to, other than, I don't know whether people have a feeling like these jobs really aren't going to be available, so why go to the effort of, you know, putting in an application and going through a process? So we're sort of out shaking the bushes and working through that process. But we are, again, anything that we're doing at this point would simply be a conditional offer because our fear is that if we don't at least make some of those preliminary preparations and we are able to open our facilities, I mean, I think obviously, we anticipate a delayed opening. I don't think in anybody's mind, we're going to open the pool on Memorial Day weekend. But, you know, if we are able to open at some point in the summer, we need to be able to react fairly quickly to that and have the staff to be able to support that. So we're trying to keep ourselves strategically positioned to do that without overcommitting ourselves to these seasonal employees.
And Laura, is it true that we cannot operate our pool or our community center without the part-time employees?
That would be correct.
I support, I support what Flora, Sally Flora has suggested, that we continue to support our staff and do it through the 15th, as she indicated.
I agree with that too. I'm also leery of potentially losing some of these folks and the burden of trying to rehire those positions back in normal times. So any way we can continue to retain them and keep their talents through the 15th, at least, I think, would go a long way for our city.
Hillary.
Yeah, I agree with what everyone said. Ideally, I would have liked to have seen all this on paper. I know that, Flora, you definitely didn't have time to prepare that with the, you know, moment's notice of the Governor. But, you know, the sooner that we could maybe get that on paper, the better. But Flora, would you mind sharing just a little bit more about the current payroll costs related to COVID? And, you know, if you're able to, essentially, the percentage of folks that aren't working versus folks that are maybe taking benefit from, you know, not having childcare or, you know, some of those other things that I think were outlined in our employee policy? Please correct me if I'm wrong on that.
So we don't, we aren't currently having anybody who's taking advantage because of the decisions that you've made as a council. We don't have anybody that's taking advantage of the COVID-19, the extended or emergency family medical leave provisions that would relate to the childcare. You know, again, that might be something that we would be looking at down the road. I think we've done some things, particularly in the Public Safety Department, where our staff and our officers have been really exceptional in working and communicating together as a group to look at making shift changes or shift adjustments for individuals who may be facing some of those childcare-related situations. So in that case, I know that we've seen some of that. I think that most others have been able to sort of make accommodations for that. I think really where we're seeing the lion's share of what I would call where it's difficult to keep people doing any type of work at all, so, is the court staff. So we have staggered the court staff, there are three court clerks. And we have one court clerk here working regular hours every day of the week. But the layout of their offices is such that we just can't really effectively create that distance between the clerks. So they've been rotating the schedules, and because their work is so tied to the calls coming into City Hall and being able to access the court software, it's very difficult for, if you're not the person in the office, it's very difficult for those people to take much work home. So they are looking at, you know, as we're sending letters and they're able to take letters home and stuff. and they're able to take letters home and stuff letters and prepare some of those kinds of things, there's, there's that type of work. So that's one area where it's a little bit more challenging for us to keep people, keep all of that staff engaged remotely. The public works staff and the field crews is obviously the other area where we're seeing the majority of that. And that, and again, I think that's where, in conversation with Celia, I think we have some opportunities to still be safe in terms of working and, and creating distancing and the proximity among the employees. But to bring them back to, to match up a little bit more closely with that forty-hour-a-week schedule. And certainly, as the weather continues to improve, that helps us as well, right? So when, when the weather was a little less predictable, that, that didn't work in our, in our favor. So we're identifying specific projects and other things there. So again, then we really get down to this group of part-time staff. For the staff at City Hall and the staff at the, the full-time Parks and Recreation staff, we've gotten, I think, really good at finding things for them to do remotely, whether that's cleanup of website, whether that's documentation of policies and procedures. A lot of those things that oftentimes you don't have time to do in hustle and bustle of your everyday life because you're dealing with patrons and customers coming in and out of the building. And so, again, today was really my first opportunity to kind of look at the hours and how those hours sort of lined out among departments and among employees in terms of who was able to log those, you know, hours worked at home and, and that sort of thing. And I was really impressed. I think we can even improve on that. Again, as I, I said, I think every day we're talking about new things and who could be doing what. And even looking at, you know, crossing department lines. I mean, you, you can go out and look for outdated information on the website, whether it's specifically your department or not. So I think we're really looking at those kinds of things. And, and so I, I would defer, and Penn and I have, or haven't chatted again yet this week. But I think that we, we could have the potential, if there are part-time employees who are interested. As you saw in one of my updates last week, we are beginning to start to do some cleanup and clean out of the pool to get it ready. Our full-time staff has been working on that. But I think that's certainly something that we can engage part-time staff in potentially and over the next three-week period as well. I don't know if that answers your question, but I think that's, that's, again, we're really trying to look at, you know, what, what can we do to continue to serve our residents at this time and keep, keep our employees engaged? And some jobs are just more challenging than others for us to be able to do that. But we, we're keeping most, most people busy most of the time.
I think that's great to hear that we're finding some creative ways to keep people engaged during this time. And I think I'd be on board, too, with supporting this through May fifteenth at this point or whatever date we end up finally hearing from the combination of the counties or state, so.
Emily, would you, could you quickly just share the proclamation for me again? And I'll try to make up some language about what a motion might look like? Unless anybody else has been working on that. I have, I've typed in. So I think really what we would do is just add a section that basically said that the city will, Emily, could you scroll up just a tiny little bit for me, please? Okay, so I think what we could do is say, "City of Mission facilities, including the Sylvester Powell Jr. Community Center, Public Works Facility, City Hall, Municipal Court, and the Police Department will remain closed to the general public." And then I would loop all, I would just loop all of this together. So basically taking the facility closer, closure section, then moving to the next paragraph, and that all governmental functions within the control of the City of Mission, including council meetings, ward and commission meetings, and all other internal and external meetings would constitute a large public gathering defined as ten or more people, will be suspended or conducted remotely. And that, and, and so there I would, would break and, and lump those two things together and say, "Through the period of any statewide or county-issued stay-at-home orders." And so I would make those two sections not date-specific. Then I would move into that paragraph and suggest that all city employees, regardless of whether they are working on regular schedules, staggered schedules, or remotely, will be compensated in quarter, in accordance with the greater of the actual hours worked or their regularly scheduled hours each week up to, including Friday, May fifteenth. Part-time employees who are not able to report to work will be compensated the same time period based on an average of their regularly scheduled hours. And then no employees will be required. So I, I would put that May fifteenth date in that paragraph. And then I think the question is, the next one dealt with an incentive that we were offering for employees who were physically having to report to work to be provided with eight hours of additional vacation leave for every forty hours worked. I would suggest that we continue to do that for a couple of reasons. It, it's not a lot of time. And honestly, for the, the time and the stress and things that are occurring for those people who are reporting to work, being able to potentially reward them with some additional time off at some point down the road is, is a great incentive for them. So I think those would be the four sections that I would recommend that the council, if interested in, would amend in our emergency declaration.
Can we make a provisional motion to authorize you to go ahead and make those changes and make that amendment? And then send a copy of the final version to the, the council for, for email approval?
Yes, I think absolutely you could.
Then I would suggest that that be the motion. Thank you.
Second?
And, and the mayor signs this emergency proclamation. And so I think if you provide that direction to both the mayor and, and I, I think in this case, and authorize him to sign, you know, sign that following my distribution of the revised language.
All right, so we had a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the side?
Great idea. Great.
I just think this will help keep some continuity as we start to reopen, too. And hopefully, this thing doesn't go on too much longer and things turn a corner here. And we can all start to get back to some normalcy. But then keeping everybody engaged as much as we can on board will really help us as we start to reopen and we hit the ground running, so.
Absolutely. And again, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. Martha, please call for the vote.
Bolton House?
Aye.
Rothrock?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Inman?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Blushmucker?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries?
All right, I believe that is all of the new business. Moving on to item ten, comments from the City Council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone have anything they would like to share?
Mr. Mayor?
Prince?
I just wanted to say that Hillary and I will host a Ward One virtual meeting next Wednesday during our normal time. We're going to try to do it through Zoom, through the city Zoom, and would like to just get the word out.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Kristen?
I would like to go ahead and send off a warm thoughts to Martha because this is a city council meeting, and I can't believe it.
Here, here.
Thank you.
I miss you immensely.
Thank you. I'll miss you all, too.
I'm sure you will, Martha.
Oh, thank you.
Martha, thank you for all your service. And when things get back to normal, we all owe you a drink or five. Hopefully, we can all go celebrate you more effectively than this.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's, uh, it's been great, twenty years, and enjoyed working with all of you and previous mayors and council. The staff here is great. Laura's a wonderful, wonderful leader for our staff and couldn't be, couldn't have a better boss. So I just, I think the entire staff here, I've got so many, I'm going to miss everyone, definitely. Lots of, lots of friends, so. And I will say, I always say, as a mission resident, as, as a staff person, I just think as a resident, we're so fortunate to have so many staff people that care so much. So, like, they don't live here, we do, but.
I always want to say, Martha, I had the privilege of being in the interview when you interviewed the position.
I remember.
I'm sure you do. It's very noteworthy. So I'm so glad you stayed all these twenty years. You have just been such a benefit and an incentive for everybody around you. You've got a great attitude, great aptitude, and we couldn't have done this. The success the city experiences is partly due to your, your leadership because I think you've done a great job, continuity through all these different council, mayors, and things like that, and always done it with a smile. So I can't tell you how much I appreciate Martha.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sally, what do you want to say?
Yes, I was just going to second everything that everyone else said and that I've been refusing to acknowledge reality on this point. But since others brought it up first, I guess we have to accept it and see you go. And I second Hillary's call for celebrations once we're out of our quarantine state.
Sounds good. I'll take you up on it. You know, I, I will see everyone around. I just live down the street. So I'm pretty sure I'll, I'll run into you here and there, probably when the pool opens or at the grocery store.
Martha, I would like to advise you, too, as you return back to your normal citizen life and to admission, that if you have any issues that come up, please just reach out to your senior Ward Two, Councilor Rothrock. That's the best starting place if you have anything that you'd like to bring up to the city.
Okay, will do, will do. Thank you all very much. I just greatly appreciate your support over the years and all my coworkers, and thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Really appreciate all your help, Martha, with regards to our countryside history as well.
Absolutely. It was fun. So I appreciate doing it. Thank you.
All right, any other comments from council? All right, saying none, we'll move on to the mayor's report. I'd like to also share what's been said. I've been through a couple of terms now with you, Martha, and always found you professional and helpful and cheerful. And I appreciate the work you've done. There is a, a core group of leaders in this city that always steps up and really appreciate the work you've done. Now, I don't know why you would want to retire amid COVID-19, but that's, I guess, the choice that you're making. But there's nothing to do but go home and stay home, so.
But I'll do. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item twelve, City Administrator's Report. Do you have anything else, Laura?
I do, Mayor, just a couple of things. Typically, at our April meeting, we would be celebrating Arbor Day and recognizing our Arbor Day poster contest winner. This year, because of COVID-19, the Kansas Forest Service has, has granted us the opportunity to celebrate Arbor Day at a different time of our choosing. And so we will be coming back and, and celebrating Arbor Day in September. We haven't set the dates yet, but please look forward to that. So it's certainly something that, that we're missing as a part of this springtime and our regular April activities. I also wanted to just advise everyone that we were scheduled, as you know, we were scheduled with harvesters to do four mobile food distribution events. In 2020, we, we were picking up the fifth Saturdays. And our next event was scheduled for May, Saturday, May thirtieth. And so I had sort of put that on the back burner, thinking we had a whole lot of other things to get through before we had to start worrying about that. Obviously, food pantries and, including mobile distribution are considered, considered essential activities. But harvesters reached out to us about a week and a half ago, asking, because they are seeing several other, other groups who typically host their mobile food distribution events, who are unable to do that or, or leery of doing that. So they asked if we would have the ability or interest to pick up some additional events. We had a really good conversation with harvesters about just sort of their policies, practices, procedures amid COVID-19. We talked with our public works staff who support that about whether or not they had a comfort level with supporting an additional mobile food distribution event. And then we looked at, can we get masks for all of the volunteers? And what sort of additional social distancing and safety training can we provide for those volunteers that might be interested in participating in the event? Very proud to say that our public works staff did not hesitate in saying that absolutely they would be willing to take on an additional event. We are, have been able to secure primarily through donations cloth masks being made. And we'll be able to outfit any and all of our volunteers with masks. And we are working on what does that additional safety training look like? And we'll continue to work on that with harvesters. So we will be adding a second mobile food distribution event in May, and it will be Saturday, May ninth. So we still have a little bit of time to continue to work on those things. But I think there is a tremendous need. And as Mission is very good at doing, we have the willingness to step up. And I think we've secured the volunteers to be able to do that. So I wanted to let you know what we will be doing, May ninth and May thirtieth. And then I do just have a couple of comments that I would also like to make about Martha. So I made her go home today and get her laptop so that she could be, be on camera this evening. And I've also accused her of bringing on COVID-19 because, as you know, she does not like public recognition and, you know, affirmation of any sort, even when it is absolutely well-deserved. And so I thought, you know, of all the people, you've arranged for this world pandemic so that you didn't have to have a retirement reception. There was no way that we could pull a fast one over on you. But I did just want to say publicly for the record that, you know, in, in March, I celebrated my fifteen-year anniversary with the city. So a long history with Martha. And, and I've just been reflecting on kind of my relationship and, and interactions with her over that fifteen-year period. And when I walked through the doors fifteen years ago, absolutely as a coworker, you know, my first impressions were this is, you know, steady, consistent, balanced, just even-keeled leader in the organization, somebody who carried that history and knowledge, institutional knowledge, but never used it for her own good. So, so often you find people with that institutional knowledge that, you know, feel like knowledge is power. That's not, as we know, that is absolutely not Martha. As, as both of our times here continue to progress alongside each other, I think that, that role of coworker really turned into mentor and teacher. I think diplomat is a word that I would certainly use to describe Martha. She moves with ease and grace among any and all mayors and councils that I've seen her work with. She's a trusted advisor to staff, to employees, to our elected officials. She's incredibly generous with her time, sometimes to the detriment of her ability to be able to get what she needs to get done in her regular forty hours. So she's back down here on evenings and weekends to do that. And, and also through that time, I think one of the things that she demonstrated was a willingness and a commitment to her own professional development and pursuing her certification and her municipal clerk certification and serving as a leader in the Kansas Clerk and serving as a leader in the Kansas Clerks Association, uh, becoming president of that organization and, and really demonstrating for all of us how important it is to be committed to that lifelong learning in your profession. And she had some great stories to bring back from, uh, some of her experiences with her clerks association. Uh, when I transitioned into this chair, uh, several years ago, I think I got an even, uh, better understanding of, of the fact that she is the glue that holds this place together and she is the rock. And she's just sitting on the other side of the wall. So I'm actually kind of glad we're not doing this in the council chamber. I'm going to have struggle to get through it. But, you know, I think in the last five and a half years, I didn't think I could become more reliant on her, but I have. And just the trust that I have in her, in her willingness to be honest and to provide honest feedback, whether I want to hear it or not, um, and the willingness to try new things, both for herself and others. And, and I think, and she just said it, so I love this, that she is a lover of Mission. And as a Mission resident, uh, on our leadership team, she was always able to just bring this really amazing perspective and share that with us, um, and, and, and just created that balance. But tonight, Martha, I want to say goodbye and probably what is my favorite role after the last fifteen years? And that is, uh, as a friend. You are an amazing woman and I don't know what we're going to do without you. We're looking forward to working with Audrey. Um, but I'm going to miss you and I know where you live. So, um, keep that in mind. But thank you. Um, you have, have been an asset. And when we talk about, um, I think about, the mayor may have to add a new jewel to his list of things, uh, in Mission, in celebration of your retirement and your career here. So thank you and.
Thank you so much, Laura.
You're welcome. And that's all I have.
That's all.
That's enough.
All right. Let's, let's move on to item thirteen, executive session. Would you not have an executive session this evening? So we're moving on to adjournment. But before we adjourn tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website, missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain, attain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.
Night, everybody.
Bye, Martha. Bye, Martha. Bye, everybody.
Bye.